The school committee to order at 7:30 PM. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise. Thanks, next up is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee.
Could you note who's not here?
I will after that, but, alright. I have a request from Mr. DeMonica to note who's not here. Mr. Salvatore is not here and Mr. Fiorello is not here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Goggan, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, nothing. Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda, we have a bunch of items to approve here. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting on June 14th, approval of minutes from the special meeting on June 20th, approval of minutes from the executive session on June 14th, the enrollment report from July 1st, the school police report from June 1st, and the residency truancy report from July 1st. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mrs. Goggan, don't be shy, everyone.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, nothing. Next up is report on the executive committee meeting, sorry, executive session meeting. We met tonight, there were no votes, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of executive session.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. DeMonica?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Goggan, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, that passes five, nothing as well. Now we're up to the superintendent's report, Mr. Mitchell, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. We did have a conversation in the fiscal subcommittee meeting about the facilities work that is taking place in the district over the course of the summer, so I'll just give a quick overview, since we've already had a conversation about it this evening, for the audience. We received two bids on the work that needs to be done on the pool. We projected initially that the cost of repairing the Dektron unit and the heating system would be around $407,000 or so, give or take a few dollars. And the bids have come in relatively close, I think there was only a couple thousand dollar difference between the two bids. The low bid came in at $412,000, so there was a little bit of a differential, but in the ballpark that we initially anticipated, we will be meeting, there will be a meeting with the bidders to learn more about the specifics of their bid, and our, it is our hope that once we decide on the vendor to do the work, that it would start as soon as possible, and we're projecting that the work could begin as early as October. We also discussed the need to do some coordination, because we don't know what if any impact there'll be on the program, swimming team program at the high school, so we will, once we get a better feel for what the schedule is going to be, then we can start to respond accordingly, and make the necessary adjustments if we have to, for using an alternative pool. Regarding the work that's being done in some of the schools in the district, we know that work is being done at both the high school and community school, actually, there's work being done in several schools, I'll get to that in a minute. As best as abatement is moving along in the trans building, the first and third floor abatement has been completed, the first floor tile work has been completed, they, the flooring people have started work on the third floor, and most of that work is done. The abatement on the second floor is underway, and we anticipate that the tile work will begin on the second floor, which is the floor where the central offices are located, that will begin hopefully sometime next week. We, as you all know, we have been relocated to this building, that is, all of the central offices have been relocated to this building, and I must say that the maintenance staff and also, especially Mike and his crew, did an outstanding job of, you know, moving us to this building, and, you know, and it requires a tremendous amount of time and effort and planning to move all the technology that's necessary for us to do our work, so I think it's important to recognize the work that Mike and his IT team did in, in making sure that we were good to go here without, you know, any interruptions in service at all, so that was commendable. We, work is also being done at community school, the abatement was done in one complete section of the building, and I know that they're almost done in another section of the building. In fact, Mr. DeManna and I went to community within the last couple days, I think it was maybe last Friday, and we had a chance to actually observe the wing that was complete, so, an entire wing has been completed, it's my understanding that they're close to finishing another wing, so as of right now, we are on target to complete in a timely fashion, so that we'll be ready to go for the start of school. So it's not only getting the work done, it's providing an opportunity for the custodial staff to get in there and clean those buildings as well. So, once the abatement is done, then the floors, the new tile is laid, and then several coats of wax have to be put on those floors, so there is a, you know, a rather significant process that has to take place in order to get these floors ready for the start of school. We also discussed the boiler work planning for both Garvin, and there's work also planned at BF Norton School. There is an underground oil tank that must be removed at BF Norton, and that is expected to be removed by the end of this month, I think the date is July 23rd. We know that boilers and pumps are going to be replaced at Garvin Elementary School, and those have been ordered, and the plan is that they will arrive by the third week in July, and work on the boilers should begin there by August 1st. We also discussed some of the other work that is happening at Garvin, there has been a water problem there in one section of the building, and several, civil engineers have done extensive work in planning to resolve that issue, and work began on that this week, and we know that it was, it's going to take some time to do all of the work required there, but there's going to be quite a bit of work done at Garvin Elementary School, and we're really, you know, excited about, about that. The, there was also like, I know that we've had conversations about the old playground equipment there at Garvin, that has been removed, it's my understanding that one section, most of it, you know, I guess, was not usable, however, there was one section that could be used, and that has been moved to Ashton Elementary School, and that can be used by the preschool there. So lots and lots of work being done, we meet regularly with all of the people involved in this renovation work, the architect, Torado, ENE, and Sedexo, we meet every Wednesday, and it provides us an opportunity to stay on top of the work, and the most important thing is, you know, getting everything done by the start of school, and we're confident that we're on schedule, and we, all, all of us, especially Will, DeJesus, and Alex, and Tony and I, when we have an opportunity to get out, but, but Will and, and Alex are, you know, getting to all of these buildings on a regular basis to make sure that the work is getting done in a timely fashion, and these regular meetings on Wednesdays are very helpful as well. So, that is a quick summary of the work that's being done, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that?
Any questions? I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The North Cumberland Gym, what's the status of that?
Oh, that, I, that was, we also had an opportunity to, I'm glad you brought that up, we also had an opportunity to go to North Cumberland, and we had a chance to see the, the gym, which has, the floor has been laid, they have already put down, well, as of last Friday, they had already done one, at least one coat of polyurethane, and the process requires a sanding of that layer, and then, I, I believe they said that they, they need to do at least a couple of more coats, and the expectation was that that would be done this week, so, the, they finished today, I mean, it really, and if you haven't had a chance to see it, I took some pictures of it, which I, if I remember, I'll, I'll share them with you, but it really is amazing how different it looks, it really looks nice.
And the, on the pool, the Dektron unit, so we, we approved a resolution in May for $407,000, now they've gone off for bids, so we hired ENE to do the work, and so the bids are higher than, than they thought, is that, so is that going to come back to us in its entirety? Or just the change, like, how, how are we going to move forward on that?
I, I don't know, Alex, what?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll, the, the, I guess the point is that we will have to amend that resolution.
Okay. And then, my final question is about the, the bond that we have scheduled for, to be on the ballot in November, is there any work being done in the summer to, to prepare for that?
We, we have scheduled a meeting, that is, Justin Martin and Mr. Salvatore have scheduled a meeting for, I don't recall what day it is, next week to have a conversation about a number of things, and that's one of the things that we need to talk about. So, you're right, we need to really provide some information to the community about the, you know, the, the potential for us to get a lot of work done at an incredibly, you know, a reasonable cost to the taxpayers.
So another avenue for discussion is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee, which we are scheduling a meeting for later this month. I think it was on the agenda this past Tuesday, and it can be on the agenda this, on that Tuesday.
So it would be an opportunity for us to have a conversation about that on the 31st?
That sounds good.
The only other thing that I wanted to mention is that we are again running a summer computer science boot camp, and there are, in fact, it is running this week, and we have 50 students in grades two through 12 involved in these programs, they're, students are having an opportunity to participate in the boot camp at BF Norton, Cumberland Hill, McCourt, and, and the high school, and I could just read a quick summary that Bernadette Durkin, who's really coordinating this effort, wrote for me. She says, "This is the third summer of our very successful summer computer boot camp in the Cumberland School District. The camp was offered to all students in grades two through 12. Our elementary students actively participated in some very creative computing through Scratch, which is a programming language that makes it easy to create interactive art, stories, simulations, game, games, and it piggybacks the skills taught in Hour of Code. Our middle school students use computer science as they navigated through a design problem. Students used low technology, hand form using sketching and models, and high forms of technology, apps, for the digital design. At the high school, our students took it to the next level, as they created 3D models on the computer with a program called SolidWorks, a modeling, computer-aided design program, CAD. Overall, it's been a great week, and our students had a great opportunity to develop their computational thinking skills." So, thanks to those teachers who stepped up to teach these classes, and by all accounts, students have really been enjoying this experience, I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, any questions? Next up is reports of standing committees, first up is payment of bills, Mr. DeMonica.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet tonight upstairs and reviewed the vouchers, I have two for you tonight, first is the fiscal year 1718, the amount is $1,075,277.99, it was approved upstairs on a two to zero vote, and I would move passage.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of payment of bills for fiscal year 18, in the amount?
Seventeen eighteen.
Right, fiscal year, sorry, okay, seventeen eighteen, a million, a million dollars, $1,075,277.99.
Correct. Motion to approve?
Mr. Hess seconds it, is that fair to say? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes five, nothing.
And then the next one is fiscal year 1819, the amount is $309,761.37, it was approved upstairs on the two to zero vote, I would move passage.
Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve payment of bills for the 1819 school year in three, in the amount of $309,761.37, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Goggan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes five, nothing. Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Next up is fiscal management subcommittee update.
Mr. Chairman, we did have a meeting upstairs tonight, we did hear from the business manager, we got the latest budget summary for the fiscal year 2018, we are running somewhat of a positive balance, projected balance, and, but we're waiting on additional bills that would bring that down maybe 20 to 25 percent at the moment, so we did end up in a, in a good year, but we've made a bunch of transfers to make purchases, because we've had some good savings in healthcare and charters and busing. So that was the first one, and then we have a couple of employment contracts that we need to approve tonight to hire a couple of middle school principals at McCourt Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Next up is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorello is not here, so Mr. Hess is stepping in.
Okay, thank you, so we did meet on Tuesday, we discussed two policies, we discussed J1, early entry for kindergarten and first grade, and J12, dispensing of medication. Both of these are policies we're looking to make adjustments to bring them in line with state law, and in the case of J1, we're looking to make some adjustments based on feedback from the faculty and the administration with regard to early entry into kindergarten. Both of these policies do need some adjustments based on the conversation, so both of them were tabled for further discussion in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, next up is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update, I didn't delegate this to anyone, so I will, I will give it. The Achievement and Communications Subcommittee met on Tuesday, we, we had a bunch of items on the agenda, but we primarily talked about, or we only talked about, the two-year plan for the high school, academic plan. Mr. DeManna gave a presentation of a lot of the work that he's been doing, and we focus mainly on changes to standards-based grading, grading, that we'll start seeing more discussion about over the next year. There, there's a plan to institute change for, not this coming school year, but the next school year, so fall of 2019, if I'm correct. And we're going to pick up the ball where we left it, because we have many more items to talk about on that academic two-year plan for the high school, so that will be the primary topic for our next meeting, which will be in a couple weeks. In addition, as I mentioned to Mr. Mitchell before, we, we have an opportunity to talk about communication for the, the, the school construction bond. In addition, we also would like to talk about back-to-school communication. Every year, we, we, there are things that, that parents need to learn every summer, like bus schedules and, and, you know, placement in classes, we just want to talk about the, the timing of those communications, so that, that'll be on our next agenda. Any questions? Next up is comments from the public. Anyone have any comments? Please come to the microphone. Not all at once, please. Okay. Next up is the public hearing, reading of amended policies, my understanding is that these were tabled in policy, right, Mr. Hess?
Correct, they were tabled.
So, I don't think there's any reading to do on them, because we're going to come back and talk about them in policy again, but I will give the opportunity if anyone wants to talk about them, we have public comment on here for the, doesn't seem like anyone's jumping to the microphone, so I think we can go to new business, where we will table those policies, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, later on. Okay, so next up is discussion and a vote to approve employment contracts, we have two contracts, I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Mitchell, we have assistant principal at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School, and assistant principal for teaching and learning at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School.
Okay, so, one of these positions, I think we're, we're calling it assistant principal for student life, student culture, and the other one is assistant principal for teaching and learning. I would recommend that you approve the contracts for both of these positions, and a little bit later on, I can introduce the individuals who we have decided would be a perfect fit for the Cumberland School Department.
So, Mr. DeMonica had said that these were, these contracts were approved in fiscal earlier tonight, so I'm looking for a motion to approve both of these contracts.
Motion to approve.
Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve the two contracts on the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Goggan, any discussion? Oh. Oh, I only heard you, sorry. Second by Mrs. Friedman and Mrs. Goggan, for the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
The contracts pass five, nothing. So next up is discussion and a vote to approve appointment of assistant principal at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School. Mr. Mitchell?
Well, the first thing that I would like to do is introduce you all to Erin Oliver. Erin is actually here this evening with her husband and daughter, and let me just provide a little information about Erin. She went through the usual interview process, headed by Mrs. Vogel, Dr. Masterson was also involved, was also a part of that team that interviewed the candidates, we had two candidates that rose to the top of everyone that was interviewed, we are really pleased to be able to, as that you recommend them, for employment in the district. Regarding Ms. Oliver, Tony and I also had a chance to interview her, and let me just share with you what I feel are some of the highlights, some of the notes that really, some of the things that really got my attention in the conversation that we had, and we spent quite a bit of time together, and I must say, I, we were both, if I may speak on behalf of Mr. DeManna, we were really impressed with Erin. Erin has most recently been employed at the Ucap School, and for those of you that aren't familiar with the Ucap School, the Ucap School serves the neediest middle school children from Providence, Central Falls, and Cranston. They have a program, an accelerated program, that helps students to earn credit and recover credit that they may have lost as a result of, you know, their challenging experiences in their home schools. Erin is a special education teacher, has extensive experience as a special education teacher, and here are just some of the highlights from our conversation. We talked about the vision that we have for McCourt, we've spent a lot of time talking about what we believe McCourt needs to help improve the performance of students. She, one of the things that she said, and I quote, "Intelligence isn't fixed." She talked about a growth mindset, so she believes that the right kind of teaching that all students can learn. One of the things that I thought was particularly interesting to me, as a former administrator, I can, a building administrator, I can appreciate this, she talked about something that they did at Ucap called Ucap citations, and I'm sure you all know that, as parents, when school contacts a parent, the first thing that parents think is that, gee, what did my son or daughter do? Well, the beauty of Ucap citations is that the, the, parents are contacted for the opposite reason. Parents are contacted when their students are doing well. So, at the Ucap School, and I hope that this will continue at McCourt Middle School, parents are contacted when teachers and administrators identify that students are doing something well. And, you know, having done something similar to that myself, it is wonderful to see how parents and students respond to that. So, we also talked about the reasons why we have, and the school committee is supporting additional resources for McCourt Middle School, she understands the challenges there, and I think, given her experiences, she will be an asset, and she under, she said, and I quote, again, "I understand that you can move all students, including the most challenged learners." So, it's, it's my pleasure to introduce Erin Oliver to you, and I would recommend that you support her appointment this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell recommends the appointment of Erin Oliver to the position of assistant principal, is this for student culture?
Yes.
For student culture at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School? Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mrs. Goggan?
Second.
Second by Mr. DeMonica and Mr. Hess, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, that passes five, nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you. Erin, she might want to, I don't want to put her on the spot, but...
Come on up if you want to, no pressure.
Thank you for your kind words, I really appreciate that, I enjoyed going through the interview process tremendously, thank you for the opportunity, I'm very excited about working with the team at McCourt, and my number one goal is always to do what's best for kids, and so I promise to keep that at the forefront of all of my decisions, and I really hope to move learning forward and, and move students forward in Cumberland. Thank you.
Welcome to Cumberland, thank you. Next up is discussion and a vote to approve appointment of assistant principal for teaching and learning at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School. Mr. Mitchell?
It is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Susan Cody for this position, you know, it's interesting, you know, Susan said, do I, you know, she had another commitment, she, she wanted to be here this evening, but I think Dr. Cody has earned everyone's respect as an interim in the district in a couple of positions, she helped us out at, at community school for a period of time, and earned the respect of everyone in that building, and as you all know, she came in and really had a, really settled the, the high school down when she took over as the interim principal here. Her passion is teaching and learning, in fact, she teaches a course at the college level in teaching and learning, and has worked with aspiring administrators, and there is no doubt in my mind, just on the short time that we've had to work together, that she is an instruct, an instructional leader, and based on my conversations with Dr. Masterson, and again, Mr. DeManna and I had an opportunity to do a second interview with Dr. Cody, I think, I don't want to put words in Dr. Masterson's mouth, but I think he sees her as a perfect fit for this position, and it really, it really fits our vision for what we can do to support the students and staff at McCourt Middle School, so I recommend the appointment of Dr. Susan Cody for the position of assistant principal for teaching and learning at McCourt Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell recommends the hiring of Dr. Susan Cody for the position of assistant principal for teaching and learning at Joseph L. McCourt Middle School. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve?
Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, nothing.
Thank you all.
Congratulations to her. Next up is discussion and a vote to rescind teacher non-renewal recommendations. Mr. Mitchell, or Mrs.?
I believe that, you know, there was one teacher, would you like to come up, Mrs. Vogel, please?
Yeah, I can summarize, so an executive, we talked about one, one recommendation you had to rescind non-renewal for one teacher.
The administration requests that we approve the rescinding of the non-renewal, is that right?
Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve?
Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. DeMonica, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, nothing. Thank you. I keep wanting to turn my microphone off, but I guess I have to keep it on. Next up is Discussion and Vote to Approve the Amended Policies. I think we're looking to table these. Actually, do we need to table? It's like a point-of-order question.
Since these were tabled in, in policy, just to cover ourselves, I would make a motion to table both of these.
Okay. Mr. Hess makes a motion to table J-1, Early Entry to Kindergarten and First Grade, and J-12, Dispensing of Medication. Second by Mr. DeMonica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes five, nothing. So those policies will come back. Next up, we have a couple resolutions, purchasing resolutions, resolutions. Discussion and Vote to Approve Resolutions SCPR-7-2018-30, Purchase of Chromebooks for High School.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard upstairs at the Fiscal Finance Subcommittee meeting. It's a resolution authorizing the school committee to purchase from Hub Technical for 425 Chromebooks for the high school. They'll start up at the 10th grade level and see where we go from there. It is budgeted in the fiscal year 19, technology budget. The amount is not to exceed $114,325. It passed upstairs on the two-to-zero vote. I would move passage.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCPR-7-2018-30, Purchase of Chromebooks for High School. Second by Mrs. Goggan. All those in favor? That passes five, nothing. Next up, SCPR-7-2018-31, Purchase of Chromebooks for Middle School, Grade Six.
Okay, Mr. Chair, this was heard upstairs. This is authorizing the school committee to purchase up to 430 Chromebooks for the middle school, the amount not to exceed $115,670. My understanding, they'll start with the sixth grade. It is budgeted in the both middle school fiscal year 19 budgets. It passed upstairs on the two-to-zero vote. I move passage.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCPR-7-2018-31, Purchase of Chromebooks for the middle schools, Grade Six. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All those in favor? That passes five, nothing. Thank you. We're like zipping along here. And next up, School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Any comments from the committee? Mr. DeMonica.
Mr. Chair, I would like to see us bring in the Durham Bus Company and have a discussion about the bus routes, the, more of the delay type that may happen with the road construction going on. So if someone could arrange for Mr. Neves and Ian, I think her name is, to come in and let's talk about, so we're all on the same plan here when the busing starts and the construction starts at the Diamond Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. I echo that, because a bunch of us went to the, the meeting the other night on the roundabouts that they're putting in at 295 and Diamond Hill Road, and it sounds like it's going to be a mess for two and a half years, and that will certainly impact bus schedules this coming school year, for sure. So thank you. Mr. Mitchell, can we arrange for that?
Yes, sir. Will do.
Great. Any other school committee comments or school liaison reports? Mrs. Goggan?
I just wanted to recognize two of the Cumberland High students that competed in the championship division for the hammer throw last month, Mark Coppolino and Cole Hooper. They came in 11th and 16th in the country, which I think is quite an achievement, and I just, I also want to compliment them on their leadership. They are inclusive, they're encouraging, and it's just really great to see those type of students coming out of Cumberland High.
Thank you, Mrs. Goggan. I think we had a third competitor in the Nationals, too, Thomas Goggan, who, who did well as well and was a good example for, for the rest of the students. Congratulations to all of them. Any other comments?
May I, Mr. Hess, go ahead. The school committee.
Yeah, I would just like to, to recognize Mr. DeMona's office. Mr. Denna discussed the, the plan that he has for the high school, but I think anybody that's attended the Achievement Subcommittee meetings over the past several weeks, the depth of discussion that we've had with regard to elementary, middle, and now getting into the high school, and how long it's taken us to get through that material speaks to how much work and effort Mr. DeMona and his staff have put into those plans, and the amount of rigor that they are looking to implement. I think it speaks volumes to what they have dedicated to try and move the district forward, and I would just like to thank Mr. DeMona and his staff for that. In addition to that, just as a, kind of a public service announcement, I'd just like to remind any parents, residents, or elected officials that if they have any questions or want to engage in a discussion with the school committee, that they can reach out to us directly, they can reach out to us through Mr. Salvatore. We all have email addresses, we all have phone numbers posted on the website, and that would be the preferred method of getting a hold of us rather than through other means like the Valley Breeze. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just, I just want to, I thanked her personally, but I just want to publicly thank Mrs. Goggan for a significant amount of work that she did in applying for a Champlin grant. This grant, if we are successful, it is a competitive grant, but it was very well-done, and the thinking behind this particular plan is that we would provide, I think, more of a conducive environment, in a very different environment for students to learn in. But I just wanted to, it required a lot of work, and, and I don't know that anyone knows that she did that, but I just wanted to publicly thank her for her time and effort in putting together this, this application, and regardless of what happens, because it is competitive, I just, I think it was very well-done, and I just wanted to public, publicly thank you for volunteering to, to do this. So thank you for your help on that.
Thanks. When do we hear back on that?
December is the, December's the final decision. I think we hear in September for a follow-up visit, late August, September.
Great. And do you remember how much money we're talking?
The one for North Cumberland, I think, was just under $100,000. It was $99,000 and change, and I don't think I saw the final number from McCourt. Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Goggan.
Mrs. Goggan, I think we need a grant writer in the school district. You don't have to run away so soon.
I'm going to have some free time. I'm working on it.
I wanted to say a couple things, and it's somewhat related to what I think Mr. Hess was getting at, but waking up this morning and seeing the Valley Breeze, and I don't know if you remember, well, we all remember. A month ago, we voted on some land around McCourt, and the town council was asking our opinion on whether we thought certain lots could, could or should be sold, and I think we, we said no to five of them, is that right? Well, there were, there were some that we gave no comment on, that were further away from the school. Anyway, I read in the breeze that the mayor said that if we want to save those, those plots of land, we should buy them ourselves, and I don't know of any school district that owns any property. Maybe we could do some research on that, but I'm not sure it's worth it, because it's not something I'm going to push for. I think if we want to save those plots of land, the easy way to do that is not to sell them, and that's what I'm in favor of. So I, you know, it's a little weird to read about this in the Valley Breeze, rather than have the mayor let us know, either through email or coming to one of our meetings. But, but be that as it may, I, I hope that we can at least save the, the lots that are currently being used for nature trails and cross-country trails, because those are the most important. There's another lot that we, we said we did not want to sell, but it's not as important, I think, as, as something that's being used today. Anyone have any comments on that? Did you want to add more?
Yeah, I mean, the, from my perspective, you know, the one thing we're not making anymore of is land, and when you look at most of our schools, they are very built up. There's really, most of them are completely surrounded by houses or other, other land. So looking at it long-term, it would only seem to make sense to give yourself a buffer zone and the opportunity in the future to do something. So once it's sold, it's sold. I think it behooves the town to take a long view on land acquisition and land sales. Certainly, the Mercy Woods and other purchases that they made recently speak to a, an ability and a desire to take a long view on land purchases. I'm perplexed as to why, in the case of the land surrounding the McCourt Middle School, that they wouldn't take a similar view. And I echo your dismay at reading about this in the Valley Breeze. It was a little surprising, and it doesn't seem like the, the most efficient or effective method of communicating that type of information between the elected bodies in the town.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Yeah, I just want to add, it's a little odd to have, on one end of the town, we, we celebrate purchasing open space and keeping it open forever, keeping it open space forever. On the other end of town, where there's a higher-density population, where there's currently open space, we're, we're thinking of selling it. It just doesn't make sense to me, but maybe we, we've talked about that enough. What I also want to add is, my son is in the bridge program, and it starts next week, and I, you know, kudos to everyone involved in that program. There's more people than, actually, I don't know who, who were all involved, but I just want to say that, you know, the communication's been good. My son is reluctantly excited to go to school in the summer for a couple hours a day for a couple weeks, but I think it's going to be good for all those kids who do it, so I appreciate it. Anything else for anyone? I think we need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hess makes a motion to adjourn. Second by Mrs. Goggan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes five, nothing, and we are adjourned at 8:11 PM. Thank you, everyone.